For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
I don't want to be answering. Don't answer my questions. Penny, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, good evening. Welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, September 19th, 2016. Call the order, please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this evening, I'd ask that we start our meeting with a moment of silence to recognize and acknowledge the passing of our state representative, Peter Patalia, and our good friend. Thank you. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? I do have one that I would propose, adding the resolution of support of Alpena's military and veteran caregivers to D under Proclamations. Karen thinks that's appropriate, spot?
Uh, yes.
Second.
Just a minute here.
Mm-hmm.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other mods?
Yes. Staff would request that we add that we go into closed session, discuss litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, approval of the minutes, regular session of September 5th, 2016, and closed session of September 5th, 2016. Any issues, changes? Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda, non-agenda items are allowed fifteen minutes, or I'm sorry, fifteen minutes. We'll be here all night. We'll be here a while. Are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that you'll be allowed to address counsel. If you'd like to, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Oh, podium. Thank you.
My name is Tyler Cosgrove. My address, 57495 Maple Lane Road. Do you have your address now?
Sure.
Just gonna read this. "I've just recently moved to Alpena from downstate where most cities have opened their minds and respected the people of Michigan when we voted into state law the right to use and access medical marijuana. And these cities have allowed their citizens to enjoy their right according to God and the state law. A recent news article in Alpena paper stated, 'It is illegal to operate a dispensary in Michigan, but what isn't acknowledged is nonprofit business model safe access centers where an exchange is made between patient and caregiver are completely legal under state law.' It's also said opening a dispensary might have consequences, but I must ask, do they outweigh medical cardholders being hooked on heroin and seeking other drugs just because they can't afford to vacation across the state to obtain real medicine where people respect their rights? Do they outweigh a city police force, or, do they outweigh a city police force so intent on busting kids with pot that it's easier for teenagers to get heroin in Alpena than a little bit of weed? Adam Poll, the article's author, stated, 'There is no interest in medical marijuana use and access,' quote, 'Isn't a topic that comes up often.' Well, Mr. Adam Poll is obviously not listening to the real people of Alpena. Even downstate, we have an interest in the patients of northern Michigan having their right equally respected. And last but not least, Poll said, 'It is also determined there is no accepted medical use and should therefore remain illegal under federal law. Must I remind you, in making your further decisions on this matter, that the same people declaring medical marijuana has no medical value are the same people holding a patent on it as a neuroprotegent? Please make the choice to honor the wishes, rights, and personal freedoms of those living in Alpena and the many medical marijuana patients who love visiting Alpena and embrace them instead of making them criminals by association with their legal medicine. We should work to be the best leading example in northeastern Michigan when people think of how dispensaries should be handled along with the medical laws altogether, especially as the state is considering a bill to allow dispensaries to legally operate in Michigan right now as we speak. It's coming and it's inevitable. I only wish, along with many, many of your residents, that my city council, our city council, will reflect and respect our real desires in their decision-making. I plead with you to make Alpena medical marijuana friendly and allow legal nonprofit business model safe access centers in Alpena as they present themselves and their desire to provide the care many of Alpena citizens want until the new proposed bill allowing dispensaries is legally, or allowing dispensaries to operate legally is worked out. Thank you."
Thank you, Tyler.
Good evening, council.
Chief.
I'm Bill Fortwood, your fire chief. Just like to let you know a little bit about the AEDs, Automated External Diffusers. You probably wrote about it, read about it a little bit in the paper. Through the efforts of the Michigan Rural EMS Network and a grant that we secured last year, we've been able to secure our first four or five AEDs. I believe we're going to be looking at eight or nine by the time we're done. The first five, or the first four, rather, are going in city facilities. Mike Kalashewski was in charge of looking at all of our buildings and so forth, as you know. And Rich Selinger helped us do an assessment of where the big, great areas of greatest needs would be and also where they would be the most effective. And part of that is because we can control and train the workforce within the city buildings much easier than we can on the general public. So we're kind of picking the low-hanging fruit first. So these first four are going in City Hall, DPW, and the two water plants. It'll come along with high-performance CPR training. And I'm gonna show you here in just a minute that these are our unique AEDs. They're a new technology that has a high-performance CPR sensor pad that when you do the CPR, you put that down on the chest before your hands and it actually records how deep, how fast, how much recoil. And then it allows us to download that data and analyze the data later so that we can improve performance and continuously improve our quality. So we are already doing CPR training for all the city staff. We'll continue doing that, but we'll add this into it. And I have one that I wanted to show you here. They each come in an alarmed cabinet, so that if you pull it out of the cabinet, it makes noise. And then the device has this pad that I was just telling you about, in addition to the regular pad. And it talks you through exactly what to do by simply opening the lid. It will speak momentarily.
Stay calm. Call the police. 911 is called now.
And so forth. So just to let you know, our first four are in. There'll be more coming. It's not just in the city. We're starting with city buildings, but there are some locations throughout Alpena County that will be getting AEDs as part of this initiative. We've developed a registry of AEDs throughout Alpena County to determine where they are, whether they're operable or not, whether the people there are trained, if not, we'll help them train. And then where there aren't any, to the extent that we can, we'll place them there. So kind of a neat thing. And when we provide this training, by the way, the cost of doing so, the manpower cost is paid for by the grant. So it's not actually city dollars. Kind of a neat thing. So just want to let you know what we got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes.
Do you do an approval of the minutes?
Yes. We did approval of the minutes, right?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Tonight's consent agenda, A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $230,644.80 via the budget amendment to set up purchase of city ambulance with loan from the equipment fund.
We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
No presentations, there is an announcement. Absentee ballots available September 23rd, 2016.
I just wanted to let all the residents know that if anybody's not going to be in town the day of the election, you can come into City Hall and vote an absentee ballot. And to get that, you would just write us, email us, come in, call, and ask for an application. And then we can either send you a ballot, or you can come in, you can vote right at City Hall. And then that would help you if you didn't want to stand in line the day also. So if you're over sixty or over, you're disabled, or you won't be in town that day, you can come in and get an absentee ballot. And the last date to register again is October 11th. Is the last date to register to vote for the November election.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, proclamations, I have a few. Starting with Thunder Bay Folk Festival Week. Whereas the nonprofit Thunder Bay Folk Festival, I'm sorry, the Thunder Bay Folk Society started in 2013 for the purpose of fostering traditional music and arts in northeast Michigan. And whereas this is the third annual Thunder Bay Folk Festival. And whereas successful fundraisers, workshops, contra dances, and community performances have been held, quote, "awareness and support for traditional music, traditional arts, and the upcoming Folk Festival at the Alpena Antique Tractor and Steam Engine Show." And whereas this year's festival will be held September 23rd, 24th, and 25th, 2016. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of September 19th through the 25th, 2016, as Thunder Bay Folk Festival Week in Alpena, and urge all area citizens to recognize and support the efforts of the Thunder Bay Folk Society. And there's representatives from the Folk Festival here this evening. Next is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas Alpena, or, Jesus, let's see, sorry, I'll start over. Whereas October 2016 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a platform for educating women about the importance of early detection of breast cancer through mammography and other methods. And whereas an estimated 231,840 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed in American women during 2016, and about 40,290 women will die this year from the disease. And whereas detection of breast cancer at an early stage greatly improves the chances for successful treatment and survival. And whereas the Zonta Club of Alpena remains dedicated to educating and empowering women to take charge of their own breast health and have organized the 10th Annual Zonta Walks for Women Walk 5K Run on October 1st, 2016 at the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary. Therefore, now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim October 2016 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Alpena, encourage all area citizens to take part and be aware of this occasion in our community. Is there a few? A couple?
(Inaudible)
Foundation to honor the memory of their brother Stephen, a New York firefighter who lost his life on September 11th, 2001 after strapping on his gear and running through the Brooklyn Battery Tower to the Twin Towers. And whereas the goal of this Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation is to continue Stephen's legacy by supporting our nation's first responders and service members. And their mission is to honor the sacrifice of firefighter Stephen Siller, who laid down his life to save others on September 11th, 2001, and to honor our military and first responders who continue to make the supreme sacrifice of life and limb for our country. And whereas Building for America's Bravest, a program of the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation constructs specially-adapted smart homes for our most catastrophically-injured service members. Each home is custom-designed to address the unique needs of each individual, energy-efficient, automated, and easily accessible. These homes use adaptive technology to help our most severely-injured heroes live better, more independent lives. And whereas in January 2015, the foundation also raised over $1 million to fully pay off the mortgages for the families of slain NYPD officers Wanjuan Lu and Louis Ramus. And whereas in January 2016, Sharon Cole of WATZ Radio answered a call to bring the first Tunnel to Towers 5K Run Walk in Michigan to the community of Alpena. And whereas the Tunnel to Towers 5K Run Walk series was created to retrace the final steps of Stephen Siller, the Run and Walk event pays homage to all first responders who made and continue to make extraordinary sacrifices in the land of, in the line of duty. And whereas the Alpena Tunnel to Towers 5K Run Walk will be held on September 24th, 2016, starting at the Banshell at Bayview Park. Registration begins at 9:00 a.m. And now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 24th, 2016, as Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Recognition Day in the City of Alpena, and encourage residents to participate in the event following the suggestions on the website or Facebook page, and support all of our local public safety officers and service members. They have some guests as well.
She asked me what's in which order, because I'm doing both.
That's a great, great question. Come on in, plenty of room.
Says adopted by.
Was it awareness?
Yep, it's all awareness. This one says a lot. Yeah, it should have probably been under.
Yeah, sometimes we're absent and we're really weird. I've heard them, they kind of mess us up. They can't just do it as a project. Okay. Excellent. Okay, last one, and by far the longest. This one was in response to an email that I received just recently from the Elizabeth Dole Foundation. This is a resolution in support of Alpena's military and veteran caregivers. Whereas the series of wars in which our nation has been engaged over time since World War II has resulted in 5.5 million military and veteran caregivers, who are parents, spouses, siblings, and friends caring for those wounded, ill, or injured who have served our nation as documented by the 2014 RAN study commissioned by the Elizabeth Dole Foundation. And whereas the daily tasks of these military and veteran caregivers can include bathing, feeding, dressing, and caring for the grievous injuries of wounded warriors, administrating medications, providing emotional support, caring for the family in the home, and working outside the home to earn essential income. And whereas the nation provides multifaceted support to our wounded, ill, and injured veterans and service members through public, private, and philanthropic resources, but their caregivers receive little support or acknowledgement. And whereas most military and veteran caregivers consider the challenging work they do as simply carrying out their civic and patriotic duty without realizing they are in fact caregivers and do not identify themselves as such. And whereas an alarming number of military and veteran caregivers, according to research, are suffering numerous debilitating mental, physical, and emotional effects as a result of their caregiving duties. And whereas the City of Alpena desires to recognize and support those who are serving in these vital roles in our community, now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Alpena as follows. That the City of Alpena become a military and veteran caregiver support city. That the City of Alpena seek to identify military and veteran caregivers residing in our city. That the City of Alpena work to ensure that our government, organizations, employers, and nonprofits are aware of the unique challenges of military and veteran caregivers and are encouraged to create supportive environments and opportunities for assistance. That the City of Alpena plan and observance each May during Military Appreciation Month to honor and recognize the military, the city's military and veteran caregivers in partnership with the Elizabeth Dole Foundation's National Hidden Heroes Campaign. That the City of Alpena encourage all who care for and support veterans and service members to extend that support to their caregivers. That the City of Alpena designate a point of contact for our city from the public or private sector for citizens and organizations wanting to offer support, and caregivers who need that support, adopted by the City of Alpena on this 19th day of September, 2016. Okay. And that's fine, so we'll, if someone would like to take that up, action.
I move we adopt the resolution to support Alpena's military and veteran caregivers as presented.
Second.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is Report of Officers' Bids for the Resurfacing Program.
On, excuse me, September 12th, 2016, the city received an open bid for the 2016 resurfacing program. Bids were sent to all local firms capable of this work, with two bids received as follows. Goodrich Trucking out of Alpena, $53,425. And Bowens Asphalt of East Towage for $72,875. The project includes resurfacing of the following streets. Windsor Court from Franklin Street to the dead end. Ontario Street from Franklin Street to the dead end. North Street from Ontario Street to the dead end. Fourth Street from Franklin Street to dead end. And Herman Street from Second Avenue to Ford Avenue. The dead end sections are chip-sealed streets which have deteriorated and are ongoing maintenance issue with the DPW. Sean McNamara highlighted these as some of the streets he would like to see done to reduce complaints and maintenance issues. The city has sufficient funding, the local street funds targeted for resurfacing, with $105,000 available. The city will look at additional streets and may request a contract modification through city council to perform additional resurfacing work. As my recommendation, the city engineer to award the 2016 resurfacing project to Goodrich Trucking for the as-bid unit price is totally $53,425.
Questions for Rich?
Thank you, sir. Can I move we award the resurfacing contract to Goodrich Trucking?
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. To Rich. Under Communications and Petitions, we have A, Approval of Bras on the Bridge Event to Support Breast Cancer Awareness sponsored by the Zonta Club of Alpena.
Hello, thank you. My name's Anika Wagner, and I'm one of the co-chairs for the Zonta Club of Alpena's Zonta Walks for Women. Our committee got together this year and wanted to do something to draw even more awareness within the community besides just the Zonta Walk. And being involved in the Zonta Club in Grand Rapids, they did a huge event on one of their main streets with their bridges. And it was this same type of thing where businesses and groups got together, decorated bras, and it just brought the whole community together to really support breast cancer awareness. So we decided to give it a shot Friday night, the night before our event, and see how many businesses, just people, individual people, that would want to decorate a bra. We're gonna do, you vote by donation, whichever bra gets the most money, you know, they win, that type of thing. You get a booby prize, is what we're gonna call it, type of thing. But we wanted to make sure you guys were okay with us. We can design something else if you're not, to hang them by, but we were hoping it would be okay that we would be able to use the bridge there between Noah and the park. And the regular bras, which will be most of what we will get, will just hang from one strap by a zip tie. Just a little zip tie that'll be loose, just hanging across that top picture there. You can see the horizontal bar. We'll just hang them where people can see them, they'll have a number on them. The big thing that we want to present, in picture number two, Stevens Custom Fabrication and the Lafarge Maintenance Group are building us a six-foot by eight-foot aluminum bra, a great big one, which they will, they're building, as you can see in this picture, I kind of drew it for you to give you an idea and took pictures today. It will hang from there. It's being made out of aluminum, so it's light. It's not gonna be anything that heavy. It's just gonna be a big metal bra that we're gonna paint pink that we can use year after year to designate that area. They're doing that as a donation to us. Anyway, they have gone down there, the Lafarge Maintenance Group has gone down there. We were at Steve's Custom Fabrication again today. He's already ordered the stuff. They're working hand in hand, and gonna build the stand and the whole nine yards there in his office, or his building. But where you can see the silver on the sides of it, that's where it will be clamped just to the bridge. But they've assured me, if you can see over on the left, it's a garlock material, is what they call it, a rubber gasket material, so that there won't be any abrasion to the bridge, it will cause no harm, it will hold the weight. We're talking a bunch of engineers that are on this, that are, if there was any wind at all, though, it will sit on the ground and lean up against the Noah building. If there's any wind, we wouldn't even put it up anyway. It's only if the weather is great and just perfect outside, otherwise, it's not worth the time of even trying to put it up. But, not that it wouldn't hold up through wind, we just wouldn't do that. So we would put it up Friday night for the event, take it down, and put it back up Saturday morning before the walk, so the runners and the walkers would run underneath it. So do you have any questions for me?
Same timeframe with hanging the actual bras?
Yes, yes. Exact same timeframe. We do it that night. We put six to eight, so it's two hours Friday night. We'll take it all down, put it back up first thing Sunday, or Saturday morning before our walk starts at 8:30. Our walk's usually over about 12:30. It'll all be taken right back down at 12:30 on Saturday and gone.
Great.
Any other questions?
Anybody have questions?
No.
Thank you.
I move we approve the bras on the bridges.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is the dog park.
Dog park has been on people's request list for many years, but it's never been transitioned from talk to reality until now. It's a great pleasure that I get to introduce a small group of people who have worked hard over the last year to bring us one step closer to that reality. Residents will be thrilled to have a designated place in the city where our four-legged residents can run, exercise, and meet up with their buddies. I will introduce you to a young And so I reached out and just tried to get involved to get us going. And then we also found this wonderful Girl Scout who was interested in becoming involved, so I will welcome her to start.
So the reason that I wanted to build a dog park is because when my dad and I were at Michigan West playing with our dog off the leash, the next day a policeman stopped to talk to my dad and said, "The only reason he didn't give my dad a ticket was because our dog was behaving." So now I just think it's time for a dog park so the owners can play with their dogs without getting a ticket or fined. I'm also doing this for my Silver Award in Girl Scouts that I get for doing a community project.
This slide is just explaining who was all involved in getting our team set up so we made sure we had covered all our bases.
The benefits of the dog park, which just allows dogs to actually exercise and socialize safely and promotes responsible dog ownership and provides an outlet for dogs to socialize.
I just wanna point out that's my crazy dog.
This is the ten-step process that we took to creating a dog park. First, we have to do park details and what an ideal park, dog park should include and demonstrate the need, and then choose a site, then create the budget, and prepare the proposal. And then we meet with the city, and then we meet with the city for the final proposal, and then we have to figure out the solicitor support and present the proposal, and then build the park.
The ideal park, dog park, should include, according to any information that we looked at, you know, should include certain information as far as what size the fence should be, and we've done all of our research to figure out, and these were some of the parks that we kind of modeled after. There was one in Gaylord that's kind of our closest location, that went our research there, how they won a court, got support and funding and things, and a few other successful dog parks that were, kinda gave us some ideas of what to do and what not to do, so. The ideal dog park should have a fenced-in area with a double gated entry so that any dogs that are in the park are safe from anyone coming in and out. It should be approximately an acre, variable depending on how big the dogs are gonna be in that area. Should have muck-mat stations for the dog owners to clean up after themselves, and trash cans for the water fountain and bowls for the water for the dogs who are gonna be playing and very hyper. Potentially in the future, possibly some obstacles or agility training is, you know, always wonderful to have, and then seating for the dogs' owners to sit and relax and watch the dogs. After we figured out what we needed, we had to figure out why we needed it. There is approximately 6,000 residents in our Alpena County that have dogs and an indeterminate number of visitors, of people from hotels that are coming, and just, you know, anybody that comes to visit that have animals. We did hear a lot about there was some public interest in this, and that there is no similarity in at least sixty miles from where we are. It is included already in the city's recreation plan, so it was something that the city kind of wanted and was hoping to someday have happen, so we take the steps to get that going for it. And it also promotes health and safety for residents and their friends.
And then we chose a site, and over several months, we considered all the city parks and looking at the pros and cons of each park, we narrowed it down to three. Bayview, Hyatt Tennis Course, Michigan West Park, and North Riverfront Park. Some of the pros for Bayview was it was 1.14 acres, there was parking, and it was close to residents. Some of the cons were it was by a busy street, by the bandshelf where there's lots of people and it's noisy, and the concern for being used as an unattended holding area because of adjoining activities. The pros for Michigan West was there was a lot of space, and the cons were that it conflicted with the city's master plan for the park. North Riverfront Park, the pros were there was parking, it was near residential areas and downtown, accessible to the bypath, currently underutilized, open space, minimal obstacles to construction, no current city plans for the park. Cons, boat launch sees heavy traffic two weeks of the year. And then we chose North Riverfront Park.
After we chose our location, we came up with a budget that included the fencing, the gates, maintenance gates, cement for entrance for the sidewalk up to it, and the entry into the park, water service to be run to a site that's determined inside the park, muck-mat stations, trash receptacles, and signage that'll have the rules, the park hours, and et cetera. We attained multiple estimates for materials and kind of covered all of the, you know, what's gonna be included in installation and all the different variables. The budget amount we came up with was six thousand, four hundred dollars, and that's for materials and everything that's included in the below list. After we did our budget, we went back with the dog team and talked it over, met with the City of Alpena, and went over the draft, so we made sure that we got the estimates from them for the water, and just kind of made sure that everything that we needed to know as far as where the exact area of the fence would go, and, you know, of all different areas of why this spot that we chose was the best one of existing parks.
Our solicitor support, we have the support of many local citizens and organizations. We have a Facebook page to bring awareness to the project and provide updates. We're seeking volunteers for the installation. Donations go to the GoFundMe page for remaining amount, and we have a head start of three thousand dollars from the Alpena brand alliance.
So after we picked our site, we, like I said, went with the city and looked over all of the information that needed to be with what's existing in this park. So this map kind of shows the bottom black line where the fence will go, that's about six foot off of the curb from the parking lot, and then it'll go on the west side, will be on the other side from the bypath of the existing benches and picking tables that are there, so that those will still be used for the bypath, but the fence for the dog park will go just on the other side of that. What we propose is a four-foot tall fence, so that it's still aesthetically pleasing to the riverfront, but, you know, still safe for the dogs to be able to stay inside the fence. There's going to, hopefully, where we're looking for a maintenance gate is on the east corner, right by the boat launch, there's a light pole there now at that end, that's where the maintenance will go, the city will be able to get in to cut the grass and things like that. And then the entrance gate for patrons is going to be by the brick walkway that's along towards the post office, and there'll be a little cement pad that walks in so that any dirt and everything gets knocked off coming out of the park. And then muck-mat stations aren't generally, you know, too specific where they have to go, but the proposed site for the water location is closer to the river in that far corner so that it's close to where the water line that will need to come in from. And then obviously at the entrance where the patrons come in, there'll be all the signage for rules and hours and that stuff. So, that's it. We are seeking support and hoping that this will all fit into the city's plan and we can get our little four-legged guys some place to run. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Like you, I'm a dog owner, and I have a lot of fun with my dog, and I'm really looking forward to the dog park. But I wonder if there, how you manage the oversight, for instance? You mentioned people who just dump their dogs and then go do whatever. How, what will you do about that? I'm also concerned about how do you, how do you police well enough to know if a dog has its vaccination tags so that we don't want everybody to get sick?
Right.
And then what about dogs who are, people just kind of say, "Oh, they're very nice, very nice," but they are actually vicious dogs? How will, just overall, how will you police the area?
Well, there won't be, like, you know, obviously a security or police officer available there. It's kind of a, we're hoping, and just as they do in Gaylord, is it's kind of a self-police. If there's a problem with a certain resident or a dog or something like that, then it can be brought up to the, what's the, what's it called?
Animal control.
Animal control, thank you. You know, the non-emergency 911 number if there's an issue or a problem. You know, it's kind of the same way it'd be dealt with outside of a dog park. You know, if there's somebody on leash and there's a problem, you know, you know, there's, anytime you get any people together, there's potential that there's a problem. But the hope is that these other, you know, residents who are interested in taking care of their animals and have their vaccines, there will be a part in the rules that says that they will need to be vaccinated, you know, prior to entrance to the park, that, and, you know, no puppies under that are unvaccinated and things like that. But the hope is that people are responsible enough to, you know, follow the rules that will be, you know, guideline and, you know, outlined as far as what to do and what not to do, and if there's a problem, where to contact.
Okay. Will you post the animal control officer's number?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to it.
I am too. The only question I have, and I believe you answered it, and maybe Greg or Cindy can answer this too, is after this is built for maintenance and everything falls right under the city park, we take care of it.
That was the agreement. They get it built, the cost of building it will maintain it. And just when I was in Midland for a conference back in July, I walked around and they've got this one very huge park, which has a skate park. They had two dog parks there, one for small dogs, one for large dogs, and for some reason the one for small dogs is about twice as large as the one for big dogs. But, in effect, I think on the small dog one, you probably need binoculars to see the fire and to see the dog, even so large. But they had, here's their rules, and I take a picture of this. This is it, the total rules for them. Dogs can be unpredictable and cause injury to humans. The City of Midland does not assume responsibility for any injuries, property damage, or loss incurred in the dog park. Dogs must be under the control of the owner. Owners must pick up dog waste. Park opens 8:00 a.m. to dusk. That's it. That's what they have. Very simple, 'cause really beyond that, it is self, you know, policed, that they aren't going to have somebody there checking every dog going in to see if the vax, you know, their vaccine, you know, their vaccinations and so forth, and nor would we, we simply couldn't do that. So, they made it about as simple as you can get. It just said, "It's your responsibility, take care of it."
As far as liability, does that put it on the dog owner and alleviate the city or a group like this?
I don't know. I, I, my guess is knowing soon that if something happens, they're gonna sue everybody, including us. But this is what they will, you know, on theirs now. You know, for us, if we have a little bit more, that's fine, if you have to have those, but again, we're not gonna have a police officer or anybody else there checking that. We simply can't do that.
Well, you know, my main concern would be children who go, and adults as well. If a dog bites my child, or your child, or any other child, I would want the owner to produce proof that the dog had been vaccinated. Otherwise, it could be a pretty serious thing. And so I am assuming that the city response would be to send a police officer if there were a complaint like that.
Well, yeah, complaints.
As serious as that.
I think what they're saying is it wouldn't be any different than any other park.
True, true.
The response for that.
It sounds great. It really does. Not overly, you know, not overly police, but everybody needs to just behave themselves.
The only other question I have is, you know, something just more policy than anything is, we just issued a leash law in the City of Alpena, and so I'm wondering, are there changes that need to be made in that ordinance for that park specifically, because we included some of the parks in some of that language? I guess that's a question for you, Bill. Is there something else that we have to have before us?
We probably should modify it to exempt this area.
I think we should give Abby and Alicia some credit, because this idea's come up a lot over the years, and my response to people is always, if you organize something, council will probably be pretty open to it. And it never happened, so you're certainly the first two to really put something together and approach us, and you deserve some credit for that, so, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I was just gonna say that you are who we've been waiting for, for many years. I get the same thing that Sean does, and there just hasn't been someone to take the lead, and so we're certainly grateful that you have and everyone on the team has. The only question I had was, that you may have covered, was what your timetable is upon approval, obviously, and it looks as though you will. You have, so you have, you have the funds and things to get started as soon as this fall?
Yes, and we have a GoFundMe and a Facebook page. The link from the Facebook has the GoFundMe information that we're looking for volunteers for installation, but we've got, you know, a good start, we just will have some more fundraising to do.
I just, throughout a suggestion, and maybe something to look at, is whether you have a maximum capacity. Look at that area and say, "How many, maybe it's too many dogs to have at one time."
It is a smaller site, it's only about four tenths of an acre, but it's still, when you go out there, it's a good-sized area. It's just not, it was not possible to get, you know, that one acre designed for something.
All right, and thank you very much.
I move we approve the dog park.
Second.
And probably third.
We're not just, our certification are really approving the park.
We're supporting.
For supporting.
Support.
Well, we are approving its location in that park.
Yes.
So you are doing that, at North Riverfront Park.
You make sure that we word it properly there, Greg, so we don't revisit it later.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
All right, we're down to turn the position.
I just, throughout a suggestion, and maybe something to look at, is whether you have a maximum capacity. Look at that area and say, how many maybe is too many dogs to have at one time?
That's a great idea.
It is a smaller site, it's only about four tenths of an acre, but it's still, when you go out there, it's a good-sized area. It's just not, it was not possible to get, you know, that one acre designed for something.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you very much.
I move we approve the dog park.
Second.
And probably third.
We're not just, for clarification, not really approving the park.
We're supporting.
We're supporting.
Supporting.
Well, we are approving its location in that park.
Yes.
So you are doing that, at North Riverfront Park.
You make sure that we word it properly there, Greg, so we don't revisit it later.
No, I'm going to do it.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we're down to, I move we turn to closed session to discuss litigation.
Second. Who's second?
Sexton. Yes.
Walagora? Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Yes.
You are watching All About Alpena.